President Tam, would you like to take the beeping?
Thank you. Welcome to the April 9th City Westfield City Council Meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please welcome Pastor Matt Gaylor of the Inspired Church to lead us in our invocation this evening. Thank you Pastor.
Lord, we ask that you give us wisdom, that you help us to be constantly reminded that it's you who gives all things, that you are the one who has blessed us. We thank you for all the gifts that you've given us. Lord, help us to be good stewards with the resources and the people that we get to lead and influence. Lord, we thank you for this great city. We think that you are on the move here. So, Lord, be honored by this time. It's in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Gaylor. Will the Clerk Treasurer note the presence of a quorum?
Joe Deppner?
Here.
Noah Heron?
Here.
Chad Huff?
Here.
Victor McCarty?
Here.
Patrick Tam?
Here.
Kurt Waninger?
Here.
John Dart?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Hoping that everyone's had the opportunity to review the minutes for the March 25th meeting. We need to have a motion and a second and an approval of the minutes this evening.
Make a motion to approve the March 25th minutes?
Second. A motion made by Counselor McCarty, seconded by Counselor Huff. Any discussion? Seeing none, could we call the roll?
Noah Heron?
Yes.
Chad Huff?
Yes.
Victor McCarty?
Yes.
Patrick Tam?
Yes.
Kurt Waninger?
Yes.
John Dart?
Yes.
Joe Deppner?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. We have the also the claims docket for April 9th, 2024. We need a motion, a second.
Make a motion to approve the claims as presented?
Second. We have a motion by Counselor Waniger, seconded by Counselor Huff. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we call the roll?
Chad Huff?
Yes.
Victor McCarty?
Yes.
Patrick Tam?
Yes.
Kurt Waninger?
Yes.
John Dart?
Yes.
Joe Deppner?
Yes.
Noah Heron?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
And then correcting myself, I do need to announce a change to the agenda. The petitioners for 24-23, which is the Trailside Business Center, after extensive conversations with our Economic Development Director and others, has asked for a continuance, which we look forward to working with the petitioners on a very successful resolution and a project there. But that is continued as recently noted in the agenda for this evening. Director Todd, is there any residents that wish to address the council this evening? Thank you. And then we will move on. We have a special order of business, if you will, this evening on Resolution 24-112, which is the Common Council of the City of Westfield in approving a lease between the Westfield Redevelopment Authority and the Westfield Redevelopment Commission in approving the issuance of lease rental bonds by the Redevelopment Authority and other matters related. Oscar, I see you're here to start us off this evening.
Thank you Council President. For the record, Oscar Gutierrez, municipal advisor to the city. I want to give my partner Heather James a chance to settle in to cover the legal steps of this. But I want to begin by giving you the financial premises of the structure and why this is before you. This is a refinancing of existing bonds that were issued in 2016. The goal of this is twofold. One, to save money to the city. We are setting a floor of at least $50,000 annually to be saved on this transaction, which will equal at least $850,000 throughout the life. There was questions around the term of this bond, if we were adding any additional years to this, and the answer is no. We're keeping the exact same structure throughout the life of the bonds. In addition to that, on the last rating from the Standard and Poor's, there was a comment, and hopefully that got transmitted to everybody in this council, that Standard and Poor's had a concern about the concentration of privately placed debt. The current structure of this bond that is being refinanced, it is was placed with an insurance company out of Chicago. So when we refinance it, we're going to take it out to the open market and sell it to multiple investors, which will be reported on the electronic municipal website. So those are the two main goals of this. One, we're going to create at least $850,000 in savings to the taxpayer. We're hoping it will be more, but that is where we're setting the floor. It could be potentially more than that. Two is we're going to eliminate a negative comment from Standard and Poor's. And there's been conversations that allow Heather to come up and discuss with the structure of this. But we kept the we kept the structure of the existing bond the same, meaning that it is already structured in this manner. So all actions that you're taking today are is what already is in place. But with that, hopefully, I can turn it over to Heather to go over any legal questions you may have.
Thanks Oscar. Hi, everybody. Heather James with Ice Miller. All right. So I just want to go over the legal structure for folks in case you're not familiar with this sort of financing. If you're not familiar with a redevelopment authority, a redevelopment authority functions very much like a building corporation does. So if you are familiar with the way that schools in Indiana finance their K through 12 buildings, projects, anything of the sort, they typically use a building corporation, and this is very akin to that. We, as you are probably aware, have statutory debt limit in Indiana. And one recognized exception to the debt limit is to issue lease rental bonds. So in this case, a redevelopment commission enters into a lease with a redevelopment authority. And that body is simply a three-member body that was created by the council. And those three members are appointed by the mayor. And truly, the sole purpose of that authority's existence is to finance these sorts of deals and construct or acquire local public improvements and then lease them back to the redevelopment commission. And so that's what we're looking to do here, is move forward with a refunding of that existing note that Oscar mentioned by utilizing this redevelopment authority structure so that we don't have a debt limit issue and we can lease the event center from the redevelopment authority to the redevelopment commission during the term of the bond financing. And then once those bonds are paid off, then the lease will expire and the event center can be conveyed back to the city. And the redevelopment authority doesn't have any other sort of power or ability under their statute, which I circulated to some folks earlier today. It's truly just a financing mechanism. So before you this evening are two documents. We have both the resolution, which approves the bonds, the lease and the trust indenture. And then only for introduction is the ordinance pledging general revenues to the repayment of the bonds. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the structure or the resolutions or what we're trying to accomplish here today.
So can you walk us through the importance of adopting a resolution this evening? Then at our next meeting, we'll have a potential consideration for the ordinance. How do those two interplay, just so others can understand?
It's just that an ordinance requires two readings and two meetings unless you were going to unanimously suspend the rules and adopt the ordinance in one meeting this evening. And a resolution legally only requires the one meeting, so that's why we have you doing only an introduction of the one tonight.
And then could you bring up on the screen, I think you made a redlined version of Section 5 earlier today?
I did indeed.
I forwarded it to you, but...
Yeah, because of the top? That's not it.
I don't think it's on there.
I have it. That's helpful. Let's see. Should I forward it to somebody that could pull it up on the screen?
That'd be great if we could.
I'll do it right now. Okay, great.
Christopher, if we email it to you?
Yeah, you can forward it to me.
I could read it to you, but I'm a visual person. If I were you, I'd rather see it.
I think it's going to be best if everyone could see it too.
Yeah, I agree.
Chris usually works pretty good, pretty quickly as well.
Maybe I ask a question while we're pulling that up?
Sure.
So the RDA is essentially the body that we're approving to lease this to the RDC. The RDC or the RDA is an arm of the city, correct?
That's right.
All right. And the RDC will then lease this for the term of the bond?
Correct.
I've not seen this lease, but what authority then does the RDC have with this lease?
I mean, truly, it's really just a conduit financing. Again, like you would see with a school corporation utilizing a building corporation or even a city utilizing a building corporation. We also do have the lease, if you'd like to see it. But, you know, they're responsible for simple things like maintenance. But all of those things, you know, if there is some other arrangement that you want to have, then we can alter the language of the lease. The lease has not been executed yet. It's in draft form.
And so my concern here with this lease, and again, I want to preface this by saying that the two goals that we're trying to seek, I'm all on board with. Lowering interest rates, saving money, restructuring the bond for AAA bond rating. The end goals I'm all for. But this lease, and I don't know if you're aware probably, but there's an entity called GPSE that we're in negotiations with right now to lease the entire Grand Park facility.
Right.
I believe there's some documents in place that maybe prevents us from entering leases, for one, during that negotiation process. And two, what effect is that going to have on those negotiations if we've now leased something while that's pending?
Right. So of all of the documents that I've been provided thus far from city legal, we've not seen anything that gives us any heartburn. This would be a tax exempt refunding. So we have looked at all of the existing contracts with regard to the event center to make sure that there's not too much private use or private payment that would impact the tax status of these bonds. So we've looked at every underlying contract that we've been provided and haven't seen anything that's given us any heartburn. We would, on an ongoing basis, of course, have to monitor that and be sure that we're not, that nothing that's happening on that side of the ledger is impacting this financial lease.
Yeah, because, I mean, the city and GPSE are in negotiations. And if we enter into a lease here, any finalization of those negotiations, they're going to take subject to that lease that we've just executed. So I don't know if GPS's attorneys have seen this, but I don't want that deal to be completely killed because we did something we shouldn't have done. And I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Well, so this evening, we're asking you to adopt the resolution approving the draft of the lease agreement. And we're looking to have the redevelopment commission and the redevelopment authority meet on the 15th for the RDC to hold a public hearing and then consider execution of the lease. So I think between now and the 15th, we could have all of those conversations.
Okay. And then the other issues I would have would be with some of the language, but I think we're pulling that up, right?
First time user. The, I think we rolled down, there it is.
There it is.
Section 5. Michelle did work on that section 5 that Joe, you and I had some pretty significant concerns on. So you were in depositions all day, but you could take a look at that and others as well. Michelle, you want to walk us through kind of your wording here and the intent that you're trying to achieve there?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Heather.
Oh, why did I have Michelle?
No problem. I just wasn't sure who she was. Okay.
Neither do I.
Yeah. So the concern that was expressed earlier today was that there is no will of the council that the event center end up as property of the redevelopment commission at the end of the day. So we're trying to address that here by saying that while the lease does statutorily provide the commission an option to purchase the project upon the redemption of the bonds, we instead would like ownership of the project to be transferred to the city. And we can certainly paper that now and put in appropriate language into the lease agreement and any other documents between the redevelopment commission and the city to clarify that once the redevelopment authority is done with their ownership, that we can convey the property back to the city as opposed to the redevelopment commission.
And so this redlined version is better than where we were, in my opinion. But isn't this kind of conflicting language? If the RDC is given an option to purchase, but then they're required to transfer it to the city?
So the statute requires that they have an option to purchase, so I can't take that out. But I think that we can contract around it so that ownership will be ultimately with the city instead of the RDC. And the lease provides that it can also go to the city.
Any other council questions?
So approval of the resolution tonight?
Mm-hmm.
And then the hearing of the ordinance, the first reading of the ordinance. If we don't get our questions answered or the topics that we need answered by the next council meeting and we vote no on it because we don't have those answers?
Right.
What position does that put you or the city in?
I mean, at that point, we, so currently, the timetable has the draft preliminary official statement going out to the working group and the rating agency in pretty short order. The Baird team has already prepared it. I've commented on it, so that'll be going out to the rest of the team in short order. So we could delay our additional approvals or move forward with the understanding that we need, you know, we're not actually going to be able to effectuate a bond sale unless and until council approves the financing.
Also remember, gentlemen, that we're going after this re-bond for refinancing of the bond because of getting our ACRA as well. So if that's not the case, we'll pull all of the preliminary of getting the ACRA at this time as well. And this is something that you guys ran on and Mayor Willis.
I think Section 5 there is similar to one of the whereas provisions, one, two, three. The fourth whereas provision also states that there's an option to purchase pursuant to Section 12 of the lease by commission.
Right.
I think we need that redlined version in that whereas statement as well. I just don't want it to be confusing as to what we're trying to say here. Because that says the same thing as Section 5 before you redlined it.
I see what you're saying. I mean, it's still, I think the whereas clause is still technically accurate. But we could add in, I mean, I think you could make a motion to add similar language that's in Section 5, and then I could wordsmith that.
I think if we're redlining Section 5, then that whereas clause needs the same redline. That's my opinion.
Okay.
So question for Counselor Deppner. With the redlined versions that were introduced at the council meeting tonight for Section 5 and the other redlined versions that were in there, is that something you feel comfortable with as far as the resolution? As far as the resolution goes, I'd be comfortable with it. I think the language needs tightened up a little more for the ordinance, but I think we can get there.
So Ms. James, the question then would be on that fourth item of the whereas pursuant to the Indiana Code 36-7. And C, the authority must obtain the approval of the common council to enter into the trust indenture and to approve any pledge or assignment made therein. You're stating earlier that we could potentially make a modification here to reflect what you've written in Section 5 this evening, potentially?
Yeah, I'd be comfortable with that.
Just to better reflect that?
Mm-hmm.
Do we need to make a motion then, Caitlin, for that as well?
You could probably just move to pass this resolution and then restate the modification to it.
Yeah.
Okay. So that would be your suggestion on how to handle it then?
Yes, with the resolution. Yep. I think that's fine.
So I would make a motion to approve... Let me ask this before I make the motion. The redlined resolution, did you upload that into the agenda or is it just up there?
It's just up there.
Okay.
This was last minute, so we didn't get it to the Clerk Treasurers in time.
I make a motion to approve the redlined Resolution 24-112 that is currently up on the whiteboard and not on the online version with the addition that the redlined language in Section 5 be included in the fourth whereas paragraph as well.
So there's been a motion by Counselor Deppner. We need a second and then any further conversation?
I'll make a second.
So a motion's been made by Counselor Deppner as well as a second by Counselor Waniger. Any additional conversation? Seeing none. This is a resolution, so we will be voting on the resolution per Counselor Deppner's motion as well as with his amendment as well. Could you call the roll?
Victor McCarty?
Yes.
Patrick Tam?
Yes.
Kurt Waninger?
Yes.
John Dart?
Yes.
Joe Deppner?
Yes.
Noah Heron?
Yes.
Chad Huff?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
And then the ordinance this evening is just simply an introduction. I don't know if there's additional information you want to provide on that this evening?
It's a simple ordinance to, with regard to the repayment stream of the bonds, which is general revenues. So, I mean, I think it's pretty straightforward. Instead of pledging a particular revenue stream, we're looking to pledge any legally available general revenues of the city. That said, they do anticipate utilizing TIF as the actual repayment stream. So being that it's not an actual TIF pledge and it's a general revenue pledge, we need the ordinance to come from this body as opposed to the redevelopment commission.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions this evening?
I just assume that the pledging the entire general revenue bonds just gives us better options?
Right.
Maybe lower interest rates?
Exactly. Just flexibility.
With that, any other further questions this evening? That, Ms. James, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And I apologize earlier. I've only started my day out talking to you on a call this morning. So thank you for your explanation and also thank you for reflecting a lot of the council questions from earlier and throughout the week.
Yeah, no problem.
We greatly appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're moving on to miscellaneous business, special recognition as well. This evening, just a simple process piece. We have done the Finance Committee Chair and the Oversight Committee Chair. We're merging those two entities. You've also seen this reflected as well. Both Counselor Dart and myself are on the committee. They are chaired by Counselor Waniger to my right, moving forward as well. And I believe, are we waiting for the swearing in, correct?
That is correct. We are going to wait until April 22nd when Mayor Willis is here.
Great. Thank you. And will our Deputy Mayor handle the Arbor Day proclamation, please? Or how are we handling that? We got, thank you Caitlin.
Actually, you are.
I am. Okay. How about that? The good news is I actually know about this.
Christopher, can you pull them up on the screen?
It's not working though.
Well, things matter. We'll just go to the old paper versions. The City of Westfield proclamation for Arbor Day, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nat Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil caused by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. Whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and beauty for our community. And Westfield is a tree city and recognizes that trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the area and beautify our community. Now therefore, Mayor Scott Willis, Mayor of City of Westfield, hereby proclaims Arbor, April 26, 2024 as Arbor Day and the City of Westfield, Indiana invite all citizens to duly note this occasion. And then following that, we also have another proclamation for National Volunteer Month, which is a fantastic. Frankly, we have great tremendous volunteers, some of which are full-time volunteers, if you will. Whereas the month of April has been designated nationally as Volunteer Appreciation Month to recognize the hard work, dedication and passion of volunteers throughout the country. And the City of Westfield commemorates Volunteer Appreciation Month by recognizing its valued volunteers as well as the City of Westfield is committed to encouraging volunteerism among its employees, citizens, partners, businesses and organizations. And residents and community members who volunteer their time provide assistance that cannot be measured in terms of dollars. And more than 14,000 hours of volunteer service has been completed since 2017 through Westfield Welcome Alone. And the City of Westfield expresses its appreciation and thanks to all volunteers that actively give of themselves to contribute to the Westfield community in various ways through all the organizations within and that serve the city. Mayor Scott Willis of Westfield do hereby declare the month of April as Volunteer Appreciation Month. We urge our citizens to volunteer to give service in our communities throughout the entire year. Thank you. We have a report this evening on our TIF management report from Bondry Consulting. This evening, I believe Oscar Gutierrez will be here to give us this report, which is required. Oscar?
Thank you Council President. Again, Oscar Gutierrez, Bondry Consulting, municipal advisor to the Redevelopment Commission in the City of Westfield. It is not typical to present the Redevelopment Commission report to the council before the Redevelopment Commission, but at the request of the administration, we are providing it to you first. This is a report that is required by state law to be entered into Gateway by no later than April 15. The Clerk Treasurer has been provided with a format of this document that can be easily uploaded into Gateway. And the Clerk Treasurer still has some time to be able to do so. So it's pretty intuitive, so I'll go, I'll pretty much read it to you and allow you guys to ask questions. So the cover page just covers the Indiana Code that this is under. The next page, page two, it's your table of contents that will tell you how to get to any of those pages. I mean, I'm literally going to read it to you. The third page is the 2023 commission members that were appointed. This is only the 2023 appointees. There were no removals and there were no paid employees of the commission in 2023. Next page. These are all of the allocation areas that exist within Westfield. Each one has its own T code and the Indiana Code under which they were established. There can be multiple codes and multiple functions. Most of the functions that these are established under are under economic development, but there is a designated taxpayer TIF allocation area. You'll notice under description that there is one expansion area, meaning that there was an existing TIF and then there was a subsequent TIF that came after. So that is what that expansion area is. Next, you have the date on which were those, they were established, and then you have the expiration of all... the expiration of all of those TIFs, when they will go back to the overlapping units. I will note that anything that says twenty-five years has not started, and by law, a TIF allocation area does not begin to sunset until that has been issued against that allocation area. Therefore, we put twenty-five years as there is no debt related to those allocation areas. Next page. This is the revenues and expenditures of each of the TIFs. Now, this may not always match up to reports that the clerk treasurer will provide you because this includes all the funds associated to the TIF and then nets out any internal transfers between, between TIFs. So, it has the revenues and the expenditures. Some of the ones that have expenditures exceeding that, maybe because one time allocate, had a large cash balance and those were paid, it could be due to bond proceeds being allocated and spent via one of the funds. If you scroll down to the balances, the balances are by funds. So, if you look at, let me see if I can pick a good one here. Eagle Town has three different funds, but it's still just one allocation area. So, this is divided by the fund balances for each of the allocation areas, and then the fund that the clerk treasurer holds them under. Next page. You do have one housing TIF, so Osborne Trails is a housing TIF. There were three hundred and twenty-nine houses built, and the way that that is calculated is based on the sales price. That's how we do our calculation of how much TIF is going to be generated because they're not done building everything. It hasn't all been assessed to be able to generate a report, so we're basing it on sales price. Next page. Now, this is your debt per allocation area, so these are all the bonds that are outstanding against all of the TIFs. So, you'll have the annual payment amount. I will direct your attention to the twenty sixteen bonds, which is the note that we're trying to refinance. So that one point seven million dollars, we're saving fifty thousand dollars, and while fifty thousand dollars may not seem like a lot, it is money that will stay within the redevelopment commission to be used at redevelopment commission's discretion. But the reason you're refinancing twenty-four million, which is a little bit under that, we just did twenty-four to have a larger amount allocated, and it says thirty-two million, if you can come down a little bit, other way, I'm sorry. So, where it says Grand Junction allocation area, twenty sixteen note, you'll notice that the PNI is thirty-two million. This is because we have to report by state code. We have to report all principal and interest. So these numbers look inflated because if you were to talk to your neighbor about how much money you owe in your house, you're not going to tell them your principal and interest. You're going to say how much you owe on the principal. Otherwise, you'd say, you know, you have a three million dollar outstanding on a half a million dollar home or something like that. So, that is all PNI, and we're refinancing just the principal, which would be the twenty-four million dollars. It's technically less than that, but the resolutions are rounded to twenty-four. And maturity on when those bonds would expire, again, if you focus on the twenty sixteen, that will have the same maturity on the refinancing. But with that, I will entertain any questions. I will remind you that we do have two redevelopment commission members in the audience, and they're hearing this for the first time, and again, it's not common to come to you before them, so they might have more questions than you at the next redevelopment commission meeting.
On councillor?
Actually, three, considering.
And councillor Dart's attending.
Yeah, so it's not a quorum. It's not an official meeting, but.
Any question?
I'm not a lawyer.
Thank you, Oscar. Any questions from council?
Yeah, any questions, please feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Moving on to old business this evening, we do have our planning department here for, as well, for these projects that are for final consideration this evening, but as well as we do have the petitioners present as well to answer some questions that council may or may not have as well. We'll start with ordinance twenty-four dash oh four, the Ravinia. I know we have Ryan Collingwood from the city here present, as well as the petitioners as well. Would Ryan, would you like to just start?
Yeah, thank you, President, council members. For the record, Ryan Collingwood with the Community Development Department. The item presented for you this evening is the Ravinia Plan Unit Development Residential District. For contextual purposes, the subject real estate is about eighty acres in size and is generally located at the northeast corner of Eagle Town Road and West One Hundred and Sixty-Sixth Street. The petition was first introduced at city council at its January twenty-ninth meeting. It was publicly heard at the February fifth APC meeting while attending a workshop discussion on March eighteenth. The site and received a unanimous favorable recommendation from the APC at its April first meeting. As President mentioned, John Dobishewitz of Nelson and Frankenberg is here tonight. He is available to answer any questions, as am I, if you guys have any for staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. John, would you like to talk about some of the changes that you made throughout the process and illustrate those?
Again, for the record, John Dobishewitz of Nelson and Frankenberg wanted to go over some of the modifications that were made to the site throughout the review process. Those included, as you can see on your plan, a revision of lot configuration along Eagle Town Road with homes facing the front with no dead end and the frontage place, the frontage fade, the frontage place would wrap the intersection and come back to the entrance on Eagle Town Road. There were, we revised the area along Eagle Town interior to the site and to match the east perimeter lots with the development to our east. Garage door standards were enhanced. We prohibited wood fences along Eagle Town Road, added a half basketball court and pickleball courts to the amenities, as well as adding a shade pavilion, including seating, and we revised the amenity layout. We have an exhibit of that that drills in on that, but it was revised to provide parking enhancements as well as showing the layout that would include the pavilions on that plan. And then there was a creek crossing that we added as part of that overall plan. In addition to those items, there was a commitment or is a commitment that was made to the plan commission regarding restriction of rentals, and there is an additional commitment that was requested yesterday that we agreed to. The additional commitment is regarding the additional fishing pier, and that text would be added to a commitment. The commitment that's found online would include the addition of that one item at the request of councillor Heron. Paul Rio with Platinum Properties made that additional agreement, and we included it in the commitments and submitted to those staff earlier today. With that, I think that's a summary of the items that we have modified. Would be glad to address additional questions that the commission may have, council rather.
And thank you, John. Any questions or comments from council?
Question for you. So, on exhibit B. If you s- That doesn't look like mine. You're on the old one. There's a red line version and an updated version on the online. If you're looking at the red line, you'll see two exhibits, one that isn't like the one on the screen, and the second one on the following page is identical to the one here. That's the one we're approving today? Yes, sir. Okay. That's all you know.
Thank you, John, and thank you, Paul, as well, for listening to council comments even after the APC process. We greatly appreciate that as well. We need a, if there's no further discussion or questions, we need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-four dash oh four for the Ravina PUD.
Second. A motion made by councillor Wanniger, seconded by councillor Heron. Any other discussion? Hearing none. May we call the roll?
Patrick Tam?
Yes.
Kurt Wanniger?
Yes.
John Dart?
Yes.
Joe Deppner?
Yes.
Noah Heron?
Yes.
Chad Huff?
Yes.
Victor McCarty?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Sorry, can I interrupt?
Go ahead.
So, I'm trying to get through the new commitment. Looking through the statutes, there can be a commitment made now to the council, but I, since it's never been discussed by the plan commission or authorized by anybody, I would go ahead and authorize that separately too and vote on that, just so it's in the record.
There's no objection there. That's the process that City Legal wants to advise the plan commission or the council on.
Okay, so we'll have to do-
Yes, this does say that there can be a commitment made now before the council approves, but I would at least take a vote on it so that it's in the record and authorized that way.
Okay. So, on the additional commitment of the fishing pier, I'll shorthand it. We need a motion and a second to adopt that as a standalone item. Councillor Heron?
As a standalone?
Just as a standalone, just to satisfy what-
So I need to make a motion to approve Ravina PUD with the amendment of the fishing pier being added to the PUD?
Since you've already approved the PUD, I would just make a motion for the written commitment.
The written commitment.
Okay. So make a motion for the written commitment of the Ravina PUD, or of the Ravina pier addition.
Thank you. So councillor Heron's made the motion. We need a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Deppner. May we call the roll on this as well?
Kurt Wanniger?
Yes.
John Dart?
Yes.
Joe Deppner?
Yes.
Noah Heron?
Yes.
Chad Huff?
Yes.
Victor McCarty?
Yes.
Patrick Tam?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, and thank you, Caitlin, as well, for advising us properly on that as well. Ordinance twenty-four dash oh five, which is the Winterburg PUD. I believe we have Weston Rogers from the city here this evening to make a brief introduction as well as the petitioners on this project as well. It's good to see you.
Yep. Thank you, President, members of the council. For the record, Weston Rogers with the Community Development Department. Just want to provide a brief introduction for the Winterburg item. This petition proposes to rezone roughly two hundred and six acres of land, generally located southwest of the intersection at One Hundred and Ninety-Third Street and Casey Road for the development of a single-family residential neighborhood. This item received its first reading at the January twenty-ninth city council meeting, public hearing at the February fifth APC meeting, a workshop meeting at the March eighteenth APC meeting, and it also received a unanimous favorable recommendation at the April first APC meeting. So tonight, this item is available for adoption consideration. John Dobishewitz of Nelson and Frankenberg is available to provide a brief presentation. Both the petitioner and staff are available to answer questions, should there be any. Thank you.
John?
Can you pull up ours? Kevin's going to pull up some slides. Again, for the record, John Dobishewitz of Nelson and Frankenberg. This request received a significant number of modifications as well since the last time you saw it, which was at your January introduction. Those modifications, if I can scroll it down, this is the revised site plan on the right and the original site plan on the left. We increased lot sizes along the west perimeter to establish a transition to those parcels to the, further to the west, enhanced lot landscaping standards, made garage door modifications and enhancements, added meeting space. So we'll go to this next slide. This is the amenity area. This is the one that was originally submitted and then the revised one. We added meeting space to the plan. We added basketball, three-half basketball courts in the center area. These gray rectangles you see on the plan are additional shade structures with seating on them around those different courts internal to the site. And then you can see these two small streets that are north and south. I'll show you them. They're right here, central in the development right here. You can zoom in on that, and you can see here it was just going to be on-street parking without striping. We made it so that there's throttle downs at the intersections and identified parking. Cars can still path both, pass both ways. It's a wider street cross-section in there, but it's been striped for parking to make it more accessible for patrons to the site that would predominantly be residents in the community. So, additional items that were added to the plan was a fishing pier at the pond. As I indicated, we had a gathering area to the southern open space, added the Little Eagle Creek Trail on our plan pursuant to discussions with Public Works, and agreed to dedication of the southern open space area if that were to materialize and move forward with the city. That southern open space area is the area in green here. There were some discussions, preliminary discussions, that were kicked off by councillor McCarty about the potential that existed there. The petitioners onboard with dedication of that space to the city at no cost in the event that this city decides that they want to pursue public park planning for that, for that space. It's not a requirement, it's just an option, but we didn't want to foreclose on the ability of the city to do that, and we're willing to make dedication of that space in the event that that would occur. There are, there is one commitment associated with this request that was made at the plan commission. That commitment is regarding rental restrictions. Again, we would ask the council to adopt or approve the ordinance this evening, subject to their signing and recording of that commitment and providing a copy to staff. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any questions from council?
Just real quick, wanted to make a comment that, one, I've appreciated the APC process and everything that's been included in this. With this basically being my backyard, three things I wanted to accomplish with it was, one, improving amenities compared to what current neighbors in my area have, two, improving possibility of park space in the future, and three, improving our infrastructure because our infrastructure is just really bad out there. And the only way to do that is to get the land annexed into the city in order for the city to make any possible improvements, and this accomplishes all three. So, again, I just want to reiterate my appreciation for being able to work together on this.
Thank you.
I do appreciate the upgrade on walking trails, in addition to the trail connectivity throughout the community and getting outside the community as well. Thank you.
Victor, John, as it pertains to this written commitment for rental restrictions, do we, do we have more details on that, or I mean, what are we actually requesting to be approved there? The city's entered, the a petitioner's entered into in the past for a development closer to Grand Park, the same restriction, the restriction would not provide the ability to have short-term residential rentals in the community. We don't think that's going to be a desire in this space with proposed home values. That was more of a concern adjacent to Grand Park where there was the potential that people, investors might buy those homes, but nonetheless, we agreed to that commitment, which is identical to the commitment adjacent to Grand Park. Sure. I understand why, why we would want that, but so it's just a written commitment to add a covenant for eliminating short-term rentals?
Yeah, it's pretty much a precursor because once the HOA is set up, then you have to have majority of homeowners to be able to make that vote and so forth, and that's just a very difficult process to go through. So trying to be proactive in that regard, and the residential neighborhood he was referring to was the town, the townhomes across from the Pacers Athletic Center. This is where this exact language was first used, and we're basically copying and pasting this over to this, Ravinia, other developments. And I guess I'll add this as a fourth thing of wanting to accomplish in the area because in my neighborhood, we have a Airbnb that provides a lot of hardship to the neighbors. We'll have whole baseball teams that stay there. So not only provides hardship on the neighboring homeowners, but also our public safety and so forth, not knowing what's going on. So this, again, helps alleviate that in the future.
Yeah, I get why. I was just curious of what we were actually approving.
It still protects, too, property rights for people that want to enter traditional long-term rentals as well, but short-term rentals, many of us are more than aware, all of our neighbors that do have those experience some pretty tough nights, pretty tough weekends in those communities, which we're trying to address, but we have to address it upfront before somebody frankly engages, starts building out the community, the HOA and so forth, and get those and those covenants first, first, right out of the gate. So, hence why this has been added as well. Any other discussion? So, we need a motion and a second, and then we're going to have to do, not on this one, correct, but the next one.
I don't think so. This was all done before the plan commission, so there's no new commitments to the council.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-four dash oh five, Winterburg PUD.
I'll second.
Motion made by councillor McCarty, seconded by councillor Wanniger. Any additional conversation? Hearing none. May we call the roll?
John Dart?
Yes.
Joe Deppner?
Yes.
Noah Heron?
Yes.
Chad Huff?
Yes.
Victor McCarty?
Yes.
Patrick Tam?
Yes.
Kurt Wanniger?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Next up is the towns at Union, PUD amendment one. We have Mr. Collingwood here this evening to do a brief presentation, as well as I know the petitioners are in the audience as well. well this evening. Thank you.
Yep, thank you President, council members. For the record, Ryan Collingwood with the Community Development Department. The only presenter before you this evening is the Towns at Union Planning and Development Amendment One proposal. For contractual purposes, again, the subject real estate is about thirteen acres in size and is generally located east of and adjacent to Union Street and southeast of David Brown Drive. The petition was first introduced to the City Council at its February twelfth meeting. It was publicly heard at the March fourth meeting, and this item received a unanimous favorable recommendation from the APC at its April first meeting, in which the workshop requirement was also waived. Again, John Dobashewitz of Nelson and Frankenberger is here tonight. He is available to answer any questions, as am I, if you guys have any for staff. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Go to the last one. Oh, sorry. Again, John Dobashewitz of Nelson and Frankenberger. While Kevin pulls this up, I'll remind the council of the three adjustments or amendments to the ordinance that were being requested. One was with regard to the number of townhomes, which has been changed from seventy-two to eighty-three. The second portion of the request was to allow three-story townhomes, which is included in your ordinance rather than two stories. And the final adjustment was to increase the minimum square footage from eighteen-hundred square feet to twenty-three-hundred square feet for these dwellings in this space. Like was the case with the first item, we were contacted by Counselor Dart, and Counselor Dart wanted more information about the adjustments that were made to make enhancements along the lines of masonry on the front side and rear elevations. If you can go to the last slide, Kevin. This last slide identifies elevations in red and blue, predominantly along the Union Street frontage. And the example on the bottom right-hand side of the screen is to show that there would be first more masonry on all side elevations that are identified with red and/or blue along those side elevations. The rest of the development, while it would still have masonry on all four sides, was planned for a three-foot masonry minimum along the side and the rear elevation. Counselor Dart asked for the petitioner's consideration of making that a minimum of six feet in height. The petitioners agreed to that. That's thereby, we contacted staff on Monday. The additional commitment, like the first item, would require a motion to be made related to that new commitment that we're making this evening that would make it six feet in height rather than three feet. But again, that's only the off-frontage or off-Union Street dwellings, and the side and the rear fronts are all the same. The sides would be a minimum of six, but they'd be a minimum of first floor when it's more visible along Town Road, and then the six feet on the back elevation as well. So with that, I'll conclude, be glad to address additional questions, and thank everybody for their work and their time in getting those comments to us so that we can come to tonight's meeting prepared to ask for adoption consideration this evening.
Thank you, John, and thank you also to Polte Homes for taking those additional conversations as well throughout the entire process. Any conversations or comments? Counselor Dart, do you want to chime in as well from here?
No, yeah, thank you. Just I want to thank John and the team from Polte for accommodating these requests. This is gonna be a great project for Union Street, and we really appreciate you working with myself and who make this happen. So thank you for that.
We need a motion and a second this evening for final consideration for the Towns at Union.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to throw ordinance twenty-four dash thirteen, Towns at Union PUD.
Do we need to make it with the additional-
We're gonna need to do a second piece as well, but we need to adopt the original PUD as well.
We can't do that all together, it's gotta be separate?
Needs to be two separate votes, yeah.
Second.
We have a motion by Counselor Dart, a second by Counselor McCarty. This is on the overall, we will need to do a second action here in a moment. Any conversation on this? Hearing none, can we call the roll, please?
Joe Deppner?
Yes.
Noah Herron?
Yes.
Chad Huff?
Yes.
Victor McCarty?
Yes.
Patrick Tam?
Yes.
Kurt Wanniger?
Yes.
John Dart?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Marla. Now we will need to do a second action, which will address the amendment, which is additional three feet of brick for a total of six feet throughout the project as reflected into the documents. We need a motion to, I can make that motion if you'd like me to. We need a motion and a second to reflect that as well. Minimum of six feet, that's fine. Counselor Huff, do you want to just say that and we'll move forward from there?
Yeah, I'd like to just make that motion. The brick is a minimum of six feet, could be more, but minimum of six feet.
I'll second.
So a motion made by Counselor Huff, seconded by Counselor Dart. Any additional conversation? Seeing none, can we-
Just to clarify, that's a minimum of six feet on the entire perimeter of any building?
Yes. Hearing no other conversation, can we call the roll on this piece as well?
Noah Herron?
Yes.
Chad Huff?
Yes.
Victor McCarty?
Yes.
Patrick Tam?
Yes.
Kurt Wanniger?
Yes.
John Dart?
Yes.
Joe Deppner?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Thanks everyone for their time this evening.
Hey, thank you as well, John, and thank you too for your fine work as well. Ordinance twenty-four dash sixteen, which is the North Point Two, we have Ms. Gillingham here this evening to make a brief presentation about the project, and I believe we have the petitioners as well.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will make this brief. For the record, Lauren Gillingham with the Community Development Department. The item before you this evening is the public, or excuse me, it is the council adoption for the proposed North Point Two PUD, which proposes to rezone approximately one hundred and eighty acres near State Road thirty-eight and Anthony Road from AGSF one to PUD. In the time since this project was last before the council, staff and the applicant have continued to meet with the task force and suggestions from these meetings were incorporated into this revised ordinance. There is a seven-to-ten-acre minimum lot area to encourage a campus-like development pattern. While warehousing and distribution is permitted use, light industrial uses shall be limited to only those of primarily indoor operations that do not produce noise, odor, light pollution. These are all requests of the Anthony Road residents. The most notable aspect, in my opinion, of this development is the ten-acre preservation/forestation area on the western property line, as well as an a hundred-foot setback on the entire perimeter of the site. Within this preservation area, the developer has committed to replacing any dead saplings within the first year. After that, for years two and three, the city of Westfield will be responsible for the maintenance and replacement of those trees. An undulating berm was initially proposed east of the preservation area, which you might recall. In place, that has now been replaced with a one-time landscape stipend that will be administered by the city on a reimbursement basis to the Anthony Road neighbors. Yeah, to purchase and plant buffer landscaping that meets each of their individual needs. This will be outlined in a memorandum after this vote presumably. I believe there is some interest in adding that in as a condition of approval. And finally, this item received first reading on February twelfth in this venue and received positive recommendation at the April first APC meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions. Russell Brown is also here.
Thank you, Ms. Gillingham. Any conversations as well? I believe Mr. Brown's approaching as well.
Good evening. For the record, Russell Brown, an attorney with the law firm of Clark Quinn, three-twenty North Meridian Street, Suite eleven-hundred in Indianapolis. I will try to be brief as well. You'll notice in the redline version that was posted with your agenda that there have been a number of changes that have occurred since this was introduced. Each of those changes came at the requests slash negotiations slash, I'll say request, again, through the plan, through the task force process, which is unique. I do, I've been practicing for seventeen years. Next month, I can tell you that I've not seen this process utilized in any community to come to a place where there are no further requests. I can't say that everyone is happy and everybody loves every component of this ordinance, because that would not be being honest and being truthful. But what I can tell you is that what's before you tonight, there are no additional unmet requests from the task force group, which I think says a lot about the diligence of that group. Counselor McCarty was a part of that, that was spearheaded by the mayor, and there were very diligent and committed volunteers to doing that. And so some things that are here tonight come from the fact that you have neighbors with disparate interests who might not all be able to agree themselves. And so that's why things like the stipend came to being versus an undulating mound, because that was a reflection of those disparate impacts and disparate views of some of those neighbors. So I can tell you that I'd be happy to close this file after almost four and a half, five years of work on this project. The developer is very excited to be tonight with a unanimous favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission, and it is our hope that enthusiasm will be reflected this evening as well. Happy to answer questions that the council has.
Have you got a question? Thank you, Mr. Brown. Counselor Huff? I know this has been a long, drawn-out process, headache for a lot of people involved. Is there, was there a thought process behind why we needed to involve the city in the reforestation plan?
Yeah, so I can tell you what the thought was. As part of those ongoing discussions and negotiations, obviously, the goal to having those monies on deposit with a third party was kind of a trust-but-verify situation between the neighbors and the developer. They want those monies to be on deposit somewhere. Lauren and I actually had a pretty long conversation about how does that look, and what does it look like, and what's the proper mechanism for it. We landed on by the administration that the city could administer that, and so that's why the ordinance is drafted as it is. But that is, that's the intent of depositing of those funds. The maintenance request was, again, some back and forth between the developer, the neighbors, and the city about what was an appropriate timeframe for allocating those obligations between the various parties. And so what's before you was a result of those negotiations.
I'm struggling to find the city's responsibility in the death of a tree and us to replant it on a private development like that. I know that it's got some issues with how we can word that in accordance with this PUD, am I correct there?
So I think I'll address what I think you're talking about. So basically, it's got a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission. So with this PUD, you can either adopt it, reject it, or not take action. And if you don't take action, I think it's ninety days go by, and since it's a favorable recommendation, it's considered adopted as it's been certified. So like we've kind of talked about tonight, you can also do conditions or written commitments, but those really deal with the use and development, like the actual PUD. And what we're talking about here, I don't see that being either one of those things. And I don't see anything in the statute saying that you could amend the actual terms of the PUD aside from commitments and conditions. So I think that's why there's been a MOU talked about, and that has not been prepared or ready yet.
So the MOU, just to give you guys a little bit further explanation, and I know Mr. Brown can chime in, because he was in several of those conversations, and so can Victor as your representative on this committee, but the MOU will be adopted by the city and the, Mr. Wilks and the seven neighbors out there. This MOU is part of this barrier, right? It will be two approved vendors by the city. There will be some things, you've got to remember that the reforestation itself is just saplings, they're no bigger than your index finger. The other stuff, they'll have the ability, the neighbors will have the ability to plant, but do a reimbursement back to us. We don't know if we'll facilitate those funds or get a third party to facilitate those funds. All those negotiations still have to be ironed out, and I will commit to you guys that we'll have that ironed out within the next thirty to sixty days. We just need to get the first part passed, so that way we can then start on this next part.
Does that still leave us liable for the death of a tree, even the MOU?
We'll write stuff in there, so that way, I mean, because if they get a two-inch caliper tree, right, and it dies, that's not on us, that's back on how did they take care of it, right? So that will all be kind of written in there in the MOU.
Counselor Huff, you're kind of, I think you asked one question, but I think there was two different questions there potentially, or at least how it was interpreted. There's an issue with the reforestation issue on the saplings on years two and three, but then you also asked a question about potentially, or at least I believe our deputy mayor just answered it in a way, about the neighbors, adjacent neighbors and their landscaping package, if you will, if we would be responsible for potential loss of a tree as well. Was that kind of a two-part question?
It's a two-part question, I didn't really get to the neighbors yet.
Okay.
My understanding there's ten thousand dollars going to adjacent neighbors, but we don't have anything clearly called out for which neighbors those are. I assume that that would be listed as a parcel number or something in the MOU, so that it's not just-
All parties will have to sign the MOU-
Yeah.
-for the understanding. Now, I'm not quite sure, but there are, you know, when you do plantings from a nursery and stuff, there are warranties already in place with those trees and planting, so there normally is a one-year warranty. And I believe there's also a three-year warranty, if I'm not correct, in the reforestation area. Is that correct, Mr.? One year, it's a one year, okay. Just in the reforestation as well, okay.
Yeah, I would further concur with some of Counselor Huff's concerns. A week ago, I thought we were good to go, and then I come to see that now there's two provisions that somehow put the city on the hook between property owners and a developer. And those are the only two issues that I kind of have, would be now we've somewhat put the city in an interesting place to be stewards of funds. And the way it's worded, it's one sentence, two sentences maybe, with not a lot of detail of what the city can and can't do with the seventy thousand dollars. I mean, it says adjacent property owners, but who are they? And how long do they have to submit for their bill? And what happens if they don't submit a bill? The word landscape isn't defined, right? So what are we paying out? And I just don't, I think that sets the city up for liability. Now, do we have a lot of exposure for replacement of trees in terms of dollar amounts? Probably not, but if homeowners start suing because they want funds, legal fees get expensive. That is my concern, is approving those two provisions that include putting the city on the hook for something when, and Caitlin, you're suggesting that we couldn't approve with just a couple exceptions there?
That's, I don't see anything in the statutes about the council's role with PUDs. It's adoption, rejection. Again, there's the written commitments, but that deals with the use of the actual property, and I don't see this issue being the use of the property. It's kind of a distribution of funds administrative function. So I wouldn't recommend using either one of those tools.
I understand that it's distribution of funds, right, on one part, but there is a second part where there's city liability to replace those, which will not be distribution of funds. Could we, could we check up on that?
I'm-
Yeah, go ahead. I mean, like in-
Yeah, Mr. Wilks, absolutely. Thank you.
So I'll say, the issue that was brought to my attention was the city holding the funds aspect, so that's what I don't think is a written commitment. I would have to look more into the forestation area and learn more about that before I could give an opinion on that.
Thank you. Mr. Wilks?
Okay, yeah. For the record, my name is Chris Wilks with Holiday Properties. Mr. President, members of the council, allow me, thanks for allowing me to come up and share a little of the background here. So let me just try to explain maybe the background behind both of these provisions that are being talked about. You know, as Mr. Brown referenced, this has been a four-year project, right? And to the credit of Mayor Willis and Counselor McCarty, we have worked tirelessly over the last two to three months forming a unique task force comprised of neighbors to sit at a table and arrive at a mutually beneficial perimeter landscaping plan for this project. From day one on Anthony Road, this area has been paramount to their concerns, okay? And so the biggest thing was, we agreed to put a 10 acre, a reserve 10 acres for a reforestation area here, okay? And with that comes a one-year warranty. We will, that reforestation is at our cost. And then with our vendor here, they will provide a one-year warranty for those saplings. As part of that discussion, though, the neighbors were concerned that it will take time for those saplings to mature. Meanwhile, we will, our project would be fully zoned and you would see buildings in that gold area. As part of that negotiation, we agreed, that is, we, Holiday, we agreed to provide, there's about seven neighbors over there. So, hmm, seven. We agreed to provide $10,000 per neighbor for them to, to plant on their property, whatever landscaping plan that they would like. So therefore, they would have screening day one, okay? So that planting could go in this fall. I think that's the intent of it. We won't see a building under construction at the earliest until next spring or summer, okay? So that's the intent behind the $70,000. The, Mr. Brown's point is, we felt it was more efficient, and it did check that trust but verify box that if we deposited with the city, the 70,000, it's now between the city and the neighbors to go effectuate those $10,000 plantings per neighbor, okay? Now, if, if that is causing this council heartburn, we will gladly, that is Holiday, we'll gladly take on that $70,000. We just thought it was a better mechanism to achieve the goal here for all concerned. I still think that's the best goal, but if that's what the council wants to do, we're fine. We'll take the 70,000 and we'll handle it directly. So, and also, on those, those plantings will be on their property. So any warranties will be with that landscaper on their property, it won't be on ours. So, no, I don't know, Mr. Huff, if that's answered your question or provided some background?
Can I add quickly that this does say, or an agreed upon designee thereof? So I think there's, there's still an option for someone else to handle the funds.
Yeah. Yeah, but I think that was the intent of the neighbors. They would prefer it to be with the city. But if the city council decides that they don't want it that way, then we'll just explain to the neighbors that that was the decision made here by the council.
That would be my preference. I'll just, I'll just outright say it. I think that's a, and I commend you for working through that and offering the 70,000 to them, but I think that's between you and them. And I don't think the city should be handling those funds and deciding who gets paid and when they get paid and making those types of decisions. I think that's between you and them. And I commend you for offering those funds to them for that purpose.
Counselor Dart, I don't know if you, I wanted to make sure, I'm, I'm paying attention to you on the screen over here. I don't know if you wanted to add any, your thoughts from your perspective?
Yeah, I think that's, this has been one of our main concerns as a council. And Mr. Wilks would really appreciate you saying, hey, if this is the heartburn, then, then Holiday Properties will work directly with the consumers. And so I would, I would endorse that and I'd like to see that happen and take the city out of, out of managing the $70,000 in funds.
Now, again, I want to reiterate what Mr. Wilk said, that this was the neighbor's request, right? I know that this was something that they rather us for various reasons.
Let me just add, though, if I'm not mistaken, in the document, it says the city of Westfield or a designated third party.
Correct.
So whether the city does it and, and offers it up to a third party, or Mr. Wilks takes it over and offers it to a third party, at the end of the day, it's really not the city doing it, it's the third party doing it. So I think it's a non-issue that the residents are saying they want the city to do it. It's a non-issue.
And I think we've all heard initially from Mr. Brown, he immediately stated earlier that fact that the residents wanted a third party, I'm paraphrasing your words, but wanted a third party for that process. Mr. Wilks has also said that this evening as well. Counselor McCarty, you were in those conversations, you want to add some comments on that?
Yeah, I was just waiting to jump in. I want to echo the sentiments earlier by Mr. Brown, that this has been an years-long, months-long, hours-long process with especially adding the task group element to this, which I'll echo my sentiments at APC, that it's very rare that we can get so many with different opinions into a room and really come to a conclusion. So it's been, it's been a great overall process, but to the point by Mr. Brown that not everyone is necessarily happy with what's before us, but it's what was agreed upon and what works. With the perspective of the city involvement, that is something that I've been a little hesitant to, just because that sets a dangerous precedent. And I want to make sure going forward, that's not something that we necessarily get involved with. Because again, it's not something that's happened before, and I don't want to see it happening in the future. But to the point of the neighbors requesting it, it was, one, to hold neighbors accountable of what that 10,000 was being used for. Because there were hours and hours and hours of discussion on would there be a mound? Would there be a burn? Would be this, that? Just couldn't come to a conclusion on where it would be. It's just so individualized on each neighbor's needs in terms of not seeing future development. And to the point that the saplings won't grow to maturity, you know, over the next 20, 30 years. So do you want that long-term relief or the immediate relief? And that was a resounding, hey, we want some immediate relief while construction is happening. So again, going back to in terms of city involvement, that came, that happened, that came up because Mayor and myself, we have built this positive relationship with the neighbors of them being able to trust us that what has been said, what has been discussed that'll happen, will happen. So keeping Holiday accountable, keeping whomever accountable of what actually happens. So in terms of the MOU agreement, that wasn't something that was necessarily relevant to APC discussion because that falls out of APC purview. So with it coming up today, I appreciate everyone's comments and sentiments as I share a few, again regarding setting a precedent come the future. But that is a little background on why it is the way it is of building the trust with the neighbors. How it happens in the future with, not future in general, but future regarding this particular with the MOU. That is why that additional clause is in there of, or someone as designated, or is how it was worded. So that, that's something that will happen as the MOU discussions occur.
Let me just state again, Chris, here, like, I'm all for this project. I know you've been through the wringer. And it would have been really easy tonight if we could have just left out that line item C. I just don't feel like it's a city's responsibility.
So can I, so the reforestation plan, there's going to be 6,000 saplings on 10, on 10 acres, is that correct? Is that the plan?
Yes.
And you guys own the land still, that buffer area, that reforestation plan area, right?
Yes.
And you guys will, basically the saplings are warranted through whoever you get them from for the first year. And then you want the city, I mean, I don't know how much saplings are, five bucks, two bucks, or whatever they are. But you want the city to incur that cost if they die in year two or three, if there's a drought or whatever, we would take care of it?
Yeah, I think, and, and Counselor Harris, that, that was a offset for our $70,000 contribution to day one. So, you know, it was kind of a give and take.
Offset from the city, or?
No. When we first started off, we were going to plant the 10 acres and give a one-year warranty. That's when the, the neighbor said, we're concerned about the screening until those saplings mature. So we said, okay, we're, you know, we'll provide the day one 70,000. The city will take over any responsibility for years two and three.
You're jumping around from 70,000 to the reforestation area.
So, so let me, there was requests about warranties of the sapling. That was one of the negotiation points with the neighbors, is who's going to replace them if they don't make it out of year one? There were requests on timeframe about three years, five-year warranties. And so the trade-off became, in lieu of Holiday taking on that obligation of three years post-planting, that was where the $70,000 offset came. Holiday is going to immediately invest that money instead of potentially, maybe they invested 70 grand in replacement of dead saplings in years two or three, or maybe they didn't.
So the city admin jumped in and said, we'll take care of the warranty for two or three years?
That was part of the trade-off.
Okay.
And just real quick to add to that, I believe currently there's at least one neighbor that is not wanting to take advantage of it. So that $10,000 that's not being used by said neighbor goes into the maintenance.
We don't know that, so that's hypothetical. So that, but what Mr. Wilk said earlier, I think is a key item, which is, he, you represented that the neighbors, and obviously I'm taking out your word, people know that. So there was concern about those saplings, immediate buffering. Your immediate first offer, I believe, also included a burn, which, which was going to receive very similar treatment in planning and so forth. My understanding that the residents there did not believe the burn would be natural enough. There was some general disagreement, not all seven parties, there's seven people up here too. I can understand that everyone always agreeing, but there was some general disagreement. But general common sense, it was also, which you recognized in your earlier comment, about after a year, how does that take into account and the growth, so forth, landscaping trees? But then, while they're separate, they're linked. So because they want, the residents want immediate ability, which then was the 10,000, which I think Mr. Brown provided some additional confirmation on that. So you have this 10 acres, which frankly is developed land. You're also putting that into a buffer zone at your cost. We then take over years two and three of these saplings, really to try to satisfy the residents because of, hey, that's going to take time to grow, which I think we can all agree to that. But then in place of that, the neighbors, while they couldn't agree with the burn, they wanted frankly $10,000, which was the agreement. I mean, in my summarizing, I kind of take notes and kind of try to bring it all together. I mean, that's effectually what, what's transpired here. The concern, though, from Counselors Huff, Deppner and others in particular, is just the liability. But in item five, if, and our city attorney has rightfully pointed it out, in the red line version, the last sentence in item five, it just simply states, the city of Westfield or its designee shall be solely responsible for the administration of these one-time funds. Our deputy mayor here this evening has also stated about, committed to a 30, 60-day time period for an MOU to flush out these details, which I think all of us have concerns and want to make sure it's right. And I'm probably not putting words into your mouth, but you probably want to make sure the details are right too, right?
Yeah.
You're a detailed guy. So, but that's the part where I think that's, that's kind of the interplay of this MOU. Mr. Brown just stated earlier, I've known you, it seems, longer than 17 years, I believe that's what you said. But at the same time, you talked about, you haven't seen this type of process, so it is a little different. What the mayor and others utilized to try to address those concerns of the neighbors, I'm just trying to recap here as well. But the MOU that you could follow through 30 to 60 days, Mr. Wilks also said, hey, look, if you guys have major heartburn, us being the council, that you would be willing to do that. But you also reiterated, the reason for this third-party piece, which would be the city, as it's pondered today, is really to also provide some comfort, if you will, to those, those residents.
Right.
So I, but if we have a commitment for 30 to 60 days to have an MOU drafted...
And we can bring the MOU back before you guys for approval. So you have a couple of options in front of you. Either adopt the PUD excluding this section. You can't? We can't? Okay. Can't do that. I was just told we can't do that. Okay. So, because that was something that we were trying to figure out, how to get around this. Either wait for the MOU and not pass this then, or pass this as-is, and then we'll bring back the MOU in a, in a separate session.
And there is, I think, Kevin, is it April 1st? I think it's 90 days from April 1st. Whenever it was certified, you have 90 days from then. If you don't do anything, it's going to take effect just as certified. So, April 1st, 90 days from April 1st.
Does Holiday have actual heartburn about the cost of the trees not being covered by the city? I mean, you're willing to go to the third party for the 70,000. Do you have heartburn that we don't cover the replacement cost? Or is there heartburn there with you regarding the saplings? Right now, it states that year two, three, we're going to replace it.
Right.
Are, is Holiday willing to take that on? The replacement cost?
For years two and three?
Yeah.
But Chris, the saplings, when you plant those, those have a one-year warranty?
Yes.
From the date they're planted?
Yes. Right, so as I was mentioning to you, we viewed it as, we're contributing not only just 10 acres of land, but now another 70,000 in return for providing the relief off years two and three on any maintenance.
Counselor Huff, the way I see this is, they, they gave and they took between two individuals, and somehow the city got stuck with something. So I'm not saying put that on either party, I'm just saying, take the city out of it. That's all I'm saying. It seemed that the city, the city acted as a mediator, and Mayor Willis did a great job of bringing these parties together and spent a lot of hours to, and, and helped facilitate the two to come to resolution. And in the end, the city has two provisions, and where was the give and take for the city, right? Why, why did we get stuck there? And so I'm not saying that he, that Holiday needs to concede anything else. And I'm not saying the residents need to concede anything else, I'm just saying, take the city out of it. That's, that's my position.
And that's not to say that Holiday didn't concede enough already. I knew that you met every, every ask that the residents had, and I tip my hat to you for that. It just, once again, I don't know how that falls on the city's responsibility. And I feel like we have spent way too much time on this little section. I just feel like it's a principal issue and it's important.
Should we just do away with the maintenance for years two and three?
What I'd like to see it say is that, that it goes to a third party and that the, the maintenance does not fall on the city for years two and three. The replacement cost.
Well, I think it's going to fall on somebody, as I understand it, yeah. So...
Eliminating, I'm not your counsel, you have very apt counsel here. You have very respectful, respectable, respected planners. There is a maintenance obligation when you plant anything in a landscape buffer. And it is not one year, it's beyond one year. So if you eliminate that, you're not putting it back on, you're not eliminating the maintenance obligation, you're putting it back here. And that's why we talk about, you know, there being a give and take. This is not just 10 acres, it's actually a little bit more than 10 acres because even that area expanded during this process. So, because you added the southern leg to protect the, the seventh property owner with buffering. So, so we, there have been, that's the give and take that's happened. And, and so there, it's not eliminating the maintenance obligation. I want to make sure that clear, that's not what's happening here.
You're saying there's a statutory provision somewhere that, that...
Under, under the UDO, there is a maintenance obligation for a landscape buffer.
And it doesn't end at three years?
Correct.
It's five.
It ends at five years. So basically, we'd be on a hook from year two to five, not three?
No, no, because this, the UDO change, this PUD changes the maintenance obligations to only being a three-year maintenance obligation. Developer for city one and city, and years two and three are the city. So we don't eliminate that obligation, it falls back to the developer for four additional years.
Yeah, I just, at the end of the day, I think it's a little petty to, I mean, if you have to replace 100 saplings to throw that on, like, I just don't know why you guys just didn't take care of it at the beginning and just like, we'll, we'll maintain it. Like, it doesn't seem like a lot of amount for this large project to be able to maintain that, in my opinion.
So you, you would, you want us to take the responsibility for years one, two and three?
I'd be fine with that.
Okay.
And then we would reduce it from five to three and be okay with that.
But then, but then we'll take out the $70,000 day-one plantings?
No, it's both. I don't understand why...
So from my, from our perspective, that's renegotiate, I mean, that's a complete renegotiation of the transaction. of the transaction.
I mean, I don't, I just want to, Councilor Hens, I just want you to understand that we, years one, two, and three, we were fine, but then the concern came from the neighbors about the day-one screening. So, in order to try to, you know, achieve, I don't know how you describe it, you know, common agreement, we said, okay, we'll plant, we'll provide plantings on your property day one, so that you can put evergreens, pines, in the fall of 2024. So, that was really all this was. This wasn't us trying to, you know, I mean, for all practicality, we'll, you know, it would be our hope and intent is that when we plant reforestation, that most of those plantings will survive that year one, and then, if they survive this through year one, they're probably going to be fine. So, I really, I hope years two and three, whatever plantings or maintenance would be, would be very minimal, either way. But, day one, these guys, the neighbors have achieved the $70,000 collectively of day-one screening.
Yeah, I get it, but it's up to the developer to negotiate all that, it's not up to the city to jump in, I believe, and negotiate and put ourselves in between the two of you.
Well, again, the intent for us to deposit the $70,000 was just to provide a known third party. So, if you're the neighbor, you can imagine, having, knowing that the $70,000 is on deposit with the city as versus somewhere in Holiday world, there's a comfort to that. That was really the intent. But, if, again, and that was the intent of the neighbors, through the mayor, through the task force, that was, we were responding to what they wanted. So, that's it.
And I understand why it happened, I understand the negotiation, it's just the part where then it says, we have to be responsible for something, and your guys is negotiating. I get why you offered that, I get the give and the take, and I think that's a good negotiation. It's just the part where we got involved is the part I got a problem.
Well, I think that where we got involved, the city is through participation on the task force.
Yeah, this was Mayor Willis's request.
Yeah, Chris, yeah, if I can, I'd like to put a proposal out there, but before I do, you and I have talked about this, I don't like the burden being put on the city and the responsibility put on the city. So, I want the city administration and the planning department to know, I don't want to see another proposal like this come forward in the future. I know we'll have agreements, parking garages, maintenance, things like that, I understand that in the future, and those will be part of those agreements. And I want to, I won't go through and re-echo the hard work that's been done by Holiday Properties, by the property owners, by the city, I appreciate all those efforts. My proposal, maybe council will agree with me on this or not, so we've already determined that the $70,000 can be put with a third party. My recommendation is, we do enough money with our banking, or with our bank, that money is deposited with the bank, and they, part of that MOU and that agreement, the bank manages that $70,000, and I'm sure they'll waive any fees associated with that because of the amount of work we do at the bank. So, that money gets deposited with a third party, which would be our bank, that then they would go to and request those funds through a two-party agreement. The second thing would be for the tree preservation area, that the city of Westfield contracts, are you guys done with your side conversation there?
Sorry.
Are you done with your side conversation?
No, we're not, because we don't think we can do that, the $70,000.
Well, then you can tell me that afterwards. But, the other thing would be for the tree preservation area, the city enters into an agreement with a landscaping company, they're going to be responsible for it, and they take the ownership of those tree maintenance or replacements in years two and three or after that, because they'll plant the trees and be responsible for that. And I'm okay with the city taking that financial responsibility in this one-time case, understanding the tax benefit to the city of Westfield and its residents in the long term. So, you want to talk about the bank?
We would have to confirm with bank if we can even allow that, for them to control that, because I believe that we would have to open up a trust, possibly.
Thank you.
So, we would have to do some work.
Yeah, thank you to the council, and thank you to the petitioners for their conversations this evening. I think general sentiment from the council right now is probably to table this while we work through the details of the MOU in the next 30 days or sooner, frankly, to come to a successful resolution. Is that fairly accurate? Do we need to take an action on that? We're just tabling it for a future meeting?
No, you could just table it, and like I said, up to 90 days.
Correct.
Until anything goes into effect.
I think we could fix this rather easily and quickly, so I mean...
I believe so too. I believe so too, but at the same time, we have a BZA that's going to start at 7:00 weather, and we're still, if we're still here.
Yeah, we're not going to fix it right here.
So, we'll go ahead and table that, but we'll work in a very expedited manner to try to work out the details of an MOU on this particular matter. I do want to recognize, though, as we did earlier, Mr. Wilks and Mr. Brown, your good work, as well as Councilor McCarty and residents that also are here. I think you've heard some of the additional conversations, but I do think we can get to a resolution, as Councilor Deppner just committed to as well. So, thank you for your time, and thank you for your commitment to Westfield as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, appreciate it.
Thank you. Moving along, we have ordinance 24-18, which is the Akerson Farms PUD Amendment 1. We have Mr. Rogers here this evening from the planning department. This is relatively straightforward. Mr. Rogers?
Yep, so I'll just be brief. Thank you, members of the council. For the record, Weston Rogers with the Community Development Department. Item before you tonight is a proposed amendment to the Akerson Farm PUD. This petition is related to residential areas one and two of the existing PUD, which totals roughly 80 acres, located northwest of the intersection at 166th Street and Ditch Road. So, this petition proposes to do two things. First, modify the maximum garage door width from nine feet to 18 feet, and second, modify the minimum house floor line elevation, which also includes the front porch from four feet above the adjacent sidewalk to two feet above the adjacent sidewalk. So, this petition received its first reading at the March 11 City Council meeting, the public hearing for this item was held April 1st, where the workshop meeting was waived, and the APC forwarded a unanimous favorable recommendation to council. So, this evening, this item is eligible for adoption and consideration. With the petitioner, Brian Stumpf of 11th Street Development, and staff are available to answer any questions, should there be any from the council. Additionally, given the nature of this request, there wasn't a presentation planned, however the petitioner is here and available. Thank you.
I'm very familiar with Mr. Stumpf for decades. So, if there's any questions for Mr. Stumpf, who's here, present this evening, this is relatively straightforward, and they've chatted with quite a bit of us individually. Any questions, comments? Could we also have a motion and a second?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 24-18 for Akerson Farms PUD Amendment 1.
Second. A motion made by Councilor Wanniger, seconded by Councilor Huff. Any additional conversation? May we call the roll?
Noah Heron?
Yes.
Chad Huff?
Yes.
Victor McCarty?
Yes.
Patrick Tam?
Yes.
Kurt Wanniger?
Yes.
John Dart?
Yes.
Joe Deppner?
Yes.
Motion carries, 7-0.
Moving on to new business, new business this evening is ordinance 24-22, I Beach 31 at Grand Park, Amendment 1. We have Mr. Collingwood here, just for a brief introduction, as this receives its first reading.
Yep, thank you, President. Council members, for the record, again, Ryan Collingwood with the Community Development Department. The item presented before you this evening is the I Beach 31 at Grand Park Amendment 1 proposal. For context, the subject, real estate is about 4.15 acres in size, and is generally located at the northeast corner of Grand Park Boulevard and East 181st Street intersection. The initial I Beach 31 at Grand Park PUD was approved back in 2022, and established the zoning for an outdoor and indoor multi-sport use. This I Beach 31 at Grand Park Amendment proposal adds, it adds an additional real estate in which will naturally shift elements of the site. Due to this, a new concept plan and building elevation exhibits will be incorporated within this amendment request. The petition is in front of you tonight for first reading, it will be in front of the APC for a public hearing in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? We do not require any action this evening. Moving along, we have, our next item is 24-24, which is the Westfield Washington Schools Event Center. Mr. Collingwood, you're also up for this as well.
Yep, thank you, President. Council members, again, for the last time, for the record, Ryan Collingwood, with the Community Development Department. This item presented before you this evening is the Westfield Washington Schools Event Center PUD proposal. The subject, real estate, is about 2.62 acres in size, and is generally located on the south side of West Hoover Street, about 800 feet east of US 31. The Westfield Washington Schools Event Center PUD proposal is to establish the zoning for reuse of the existing Westfield Library Building. The petition is in front of you this evening for first reading, it will be in front of the APC for a public hearing in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, and as well to the schools, Mr. Tom Michael, thank you for recognizing our great culinary program as we expand those efforts as well with this event center. A little personal pride as well, thank you very much. Look forward to that, moving through the process. The next item is 24-25, the Vita of Westfield PUD. We just gave Mr. Collingwood a break. Ms. Gillingham?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, last time, for the record, Lauren Gillingham with Community Development Department. The item before you this evening is the first reading for the Vita of Westfield PUD. The petition proposes to rezone approximately 13 acres near the northwest corner of 32 and Spring Mill Road from enclosed industrial to PUD. This is for the development of an age-restricted, four-rent residential retirement village. It's a lot of Rs in that one. The community is designed to provide kind of a sort of aging-in-place continuum of care concept. So, you start out, as you can see on the left, with a sort of active living, age-restricted kind of condo feel into assisted living for those who need a little bit more help, and then memory care, as you can see, the building with the enclosed courtyard. And residents would ideally move through these stages as necessary to meet their needs and the season of their life. This item is scheduled for public hearing at the May 8 APC meeting, and a neighborhood meeting is also, will be held TBD on that one. Matt Skelton with Church, Church, Hill, and Antrim is here to answer any questions, as am I. Thank you.
And then, Ms. Gillingham, just, we received a couple constituent conversations about trail issues along Spring Mill, which Mr. Skelton also firmly responded, that those will be reflected in that plan as well, is that your understanding as well?
That is, that they will be providing the trail as required.
Okay, thank you. Just for residents to do pay attention, we get some good questions on email, and I do like getting those answered for folks, as all of us do as well. But, thank you to Mr. Skelton for quickly responding to that as well. Thank you. Any city council comments this evening?
Just real quick, I'll do an APC update. Majority of our agenda, Reno, Winterburg, North Point 2, Times at Union, and Akerson Farm PUD, those were all to us, and we're here tonight. And then, we also had the public hearing for the Osborne Trails PUD Amendment 6, which is the West Fork Whiskey Associated Project, that'll be going to our workshop meeting next month, and then also on our consent agenda, we had the relocation of Essler's Auto Repair, and the new business Crate Escapes by Wyndham 186. And then, just one last comment, yesterday was very special for really everyone but the city, and our team, Westfield Welcome, Parks, Grand Park staff, so on and so forth, just did a wonderful job putting on an event for the Saurer Eclipse, so that was awesome.
Yeah, thank you for having world-renowned Joey Chestnut, a Westfield resident, judging a moon pie eating contest as well. That was quite fun for me to watch. We had a 12-year-old just inhale things. Any other additional comments in the absence of the mayor? Does the deputy mayor have any comments?
The only thing I wanted to echo was, again, what a great event. We had over 5,000 people out at the park, we had some very interesting people across the world, we had people from Germany, Australia, Ireland, and we had the Lord Mayor's Communications Director from Belfast as well. So, many people from Wisconsin, and New York, and Virginia, from all over. So, it was a great event, and it's a good shout-out to Westfield Welcome Team, Grand Park Team, fire, police, Public Works as well, and IT really collaborated really well. It was a beautiful event.
Thank you. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.